Want to call a meeting to order. Um, selectmen's meeting for the town of Acton, Maine. Uh, for, hang on, July fif-
Fifteenth.
Yep, July 15th. It wasn't on my, uh-
Agenda.
It just said date.
Oh, yeah. Look at that.
Um, yeah, July 15th, 2020. Uh, first item is salute the flag. Tonight, we'll just do it the regular way, so we will salute the flag. So. I pledge allegiance-
Allegiance.
To the flag.
Of the United States of America.
And to the republic-
The republic.
Stands-
Which stands.
One nation under God.
One God.
And liberty-
And justice-
And justice for all.
Great, okay. This being the first meeting following a town meeting, which the town meeting was yesterday, uh, which I understand went very good. Over 500 people came out to vote, which is a new world record for a second town meeting, seeing as it was being done by, um, by ballot, so, uh, we'll thank everyone that came out and voted, so. Um, so, yeah, the first thing that we need to do is elect a new chairman to the, uh, Board of Selectmen. And I've been in here for, I don't know what, three years now, I guess, as chairman, and it's time for someone else to do it.
I know.
I'd like to nominate Kim Stacy Horn, if she would take it.
I will, I will.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
I'm moving a second to, uh, to nominate Kim Stacy Horn for the chairman of the Board of Selectmen for the town of Acton. Any discussion? Call for a vote, Dave.
Yes.
I vote yes. Kim, it's up to you whether you want to vote for yourself or abstain. It's up to you.
I'll abstain.
Okay, so it's virtually unanimous, so.
Oh, thank you.
Zero to one. Thank you for taking that. And, uh, we've done it a couple of ways. We've waited till next week, or we've handed the gavel right over. If you wish the gavel, I will hand it over to you tonight.
All right, well-
Take it away.
I'll take it away. If I need help, I'll say, Ed, I need help.
Sounds good. It's all yours. Thank you.
All right.
Oh, here we go.
Can you relax now? Well, um, I just want to thank everybody who came out, you know, yesterday and voted. Um, you know, as Ed said, we had a, a great turnout, you know, and thank you so much for supporting our school and our town budgets, um. And I guess that's probably it for now. I know Jennifer's got a bunch of stuff, and then there's something else I have, but we'll wait till after. So, off to, uh, Town Administrator Weekly Update.
Thank you, and congratulations on your chair.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, um, I've started making some copies of some of the stuff that we're going to go over in your packet, so we can kind of go over it together. Um, the first thing I wanted to talk about was the liaisons, uh, like the chair of the Board of Selectmen, and one of the first things that we do, uh, beginning of each meeting is to, uh, discuss liaisons. So what you see there is a memo for, um, last year that was sent out. And the next little piece of paper that you see is my personal proposal, and, and I just want to kind of go over this, and you guys can move around however, however you see fit. Um, but being David's second year, I just wanted to, to kind of let him know, because, I mean, he may or may not know this, but the purpose of the liaisons was really to get each individual selectman more involved, a little bit more involved in the department, and have a direct contact to the town administrator, have an issue with that particular department, or if I had somebody that needed to go, wanted to go, you know, higher up and speak to one selectman, we would try to gear it so that they were dealing with all of the same thing. Um, at the same time, it was important that as we created these liaisons, that you weren't getting the same ones, because, you know, like the chairmanship, I mean, it's, it's good to alternate and, and get your feet wet in all of the departments, so. Based on what I think I know from the last few years, um, this is kind of what I've put together, um, based on who's, based on really what Ed and Kim have, have done in the past and what David had last year. Kim, you haven't had the Warren Finance, have you?
I don't, no, I don't think so.
I don't think you have.
No, I mean, I've been to enough meetings, but no.
Okay.
Not as a liaison, so.
So, I proposed, you as the Warren Finance, knowing that Ed had it last year, and Ed- new committee that I know you guys are anxious to move forward with, so. I removed the, the town hall one that was listed there and put the capital improvements in. And why I did that is, A, land use is listed somewhere else, B, you have a town administrator, and C, we generally call the chairman anyways, if there's something in-house, or I'd call all three of you if it was something that, you know, was a substance. So I didn't think that really served as a department, if you will, because other than land use, it's really just the upstairs. Um, and then transfer station. David had that this year, but you haven't had that. Ed, you had transfer station last year, right, or the year before?
Yep.
So, Kim, I don't remember you having the transfer station?
No.
So that was my proposal there. Um, Ed, that would put you on Conservation Forest, which you haven't had. Uh, Fire Department, I think you had once in the beginning, um, but David had it last year. We don't want to give the chair too much, and then the Land Use Department, which Kim had this year, and we'll talk more about that a little bit as we get to David. Um, David, originally I was considering putting him on the, uh, or asking, asking if he could go on the land use, but, you know, we all know that, that David is a contractor, and he, at some point, does work in the town of Acton. Um, he may or may not, you know, need permitting or work for a homeowner that needs permitting, and we want to make sure that we're as transparent as possible, so. I specifically didn't give him land use, so that there was no, um, you know, no issue if he had to speak to somebody, you know, versus is he going to get a permit the next day? Um, and I'm not saying that might happen, but just an example. So, that would put David on the roads, uh, which is, I think, um, a good idea to put him in that. Um, he has, um, been one of our leaders in regards to the going from independent contractor, going from employee to independent contractor. He certainly has a road background. Um, he has noticed a couple of things on, on payroll that he's, that he's kind of pointed out, um, and he's got the experience. Uh, School Department is something that he hasn't had, um, and then the Rec Committee, which, um, we're going to push him into finding us some new Rec members. Uh, that's just my proposal. Certainly, it is your discussion, your decision. Uh, what are your thoughts?
I think it sounds pretty good. Yeah, I don't have, I don't have any issues. Um, if, yeah, Conservation Forestry is really pretty, uh, you know, a pretty simple one. Um, Land Use, I like that anyway, and Fight Department, I know it inside and out, so.
I thought with the truck purchase coming up this year, you know, you'd be a good resource there. Um, and I try to take one, you know, I mean, like a really, I'd call it a heavy hitter or a real active department, and give each of you a real active one. One of you would not so active, like Conservation, Transfer Station, and Rec, you know, just the, so not one person's carrying the load of the con, the committees that do, that have the most activity.
Nope, I'm, I'm fine with that.
I like it, what I've got, too. I haven't been on any of these, so.
David?
Yes, um, yeah, the School Department, uh, yeah, Rec Department, Roads, yeah, I'm, I'm good with it.
I did a good job.
You did.
Well, there.
Well, I'll hear about it later.
I'm going to miss the transfer station, because I like when I'm talking to Bob.
Yeah. We just don't go talk to Bob.
That's a-
They're nice guys up there.
All right, so liaisons, so I'll send out a memo similar to last year, you know, I guess I may just double check. Anybody have any changes? I mean, we're, we're reiterating in there to staff and committee chairs that, you know, your liaison is the point of contact. He or she has no authority, you know, no authority without the other two selectmen. Um, anything else that, um, you want me to, to remind them of in the memo? Kim, you've got to ask them if they don't answer.
Okay, just thank you very much. So, uh, Ed, do you have anything you want to-
No, I'm fine, no.
How about you, David?
I was just looking at last year's list.
Oh, I think-
Okay.
Sounds all right.
No, I was looking at last year's list, and, uh-
Right.
Um, you and I, Kim, swapped two of them. We swapped the School Department and the Road Committee, so.
That's right. I was sick. I had the kidney stones, and I was out.
Yeah.
And that's, yeah, you took it over, so.
Or just, you know.
Yeah, because I, yep.
Yeah, I just pulled, um, my last memo, but I think you changed it after the fact, right?
Yes, we changed it, uh, a month or two afterward.
Right, yeah, because I was sick that summer, so, yeah, so I didn't end up doing it, okay.
That's fine, that's good.
Next on my list, uh, to go over is the election results. Uh, so you have, um, we won't go through these line by line, but we had 564 voters, um, and the 564 ballots cast did prove on the referendum and the town ballot, so that's always excellent. You can see the bond questions, um, pretty much passed two to one in the town of Acton. Uh, Republicans, we had 201 Republicans participate in the primary. Uh, there was no challenges there. The Democrats had 243 participants in the primary. Um, the US Senate is the only one that had some contention, uh, that is the ranked choice voting. Um, Acton chose, um, Sarah Gideon as their first choice. We'll see what happens statewide. And then the next, uh, document is quite lengthy, um, quite, quite, quite lengthy, but what we did was, uh, went through and, um, put the results by each warrant articles for you, so that you could go through and actually look at them, and they're, they're interesting to look. I mean, out of the 564 people, most of the articles were 400, four and 100 against it. Um, but if you, you know, you go through and, and look at some, some of them, it's interesting to see which articles that, that, um, those kind of 400, 100 numbers, um, fluctuate on, so. Um, that's just kind of an FYI for you. It is all on the town's website. So. Anything on that? Oh, we lost it.
No, I already have it, I'm just stapling.
So those are the results. All right, so the next item that you have in your packet is, uh, from the treasurer. This is a 2021 final budget. This just gives you, um, a a breakdown of the actual articles, um, that were on the town meeting. Um, what their description was, school emergency expense, winter overdraft, general government, uh, et cetera. She tells you the grant total raised by taxation, how much the reserve fund is, if it's applicable, uh, the revenues that were budgeted, and the undesignated funds, so this is just, uh, for you to follow along. Uh, she did get the, um, county tax numbers in, um, so that's added to the bottom as well. That's just information for you. So as we go into the new year, continuing on that conversation, um, we know that the voters approved the, uh, Road Agent, the Road Commissioner article. Um, and there was nothing in there, um, that talks about what you guys have been working on, but Michelle and I met today and talked about what a policy might look like, because in order to change this to an independent contractor, we need to have some sort of policy in place. So, your next page, uh, says the poli, uh, Payment of Road Wages Policy. This is just the draft. Um, but what I need you guys to do is to look at this, see what you want to change on it, but more importantly, tell me when it's going to go into effect, because I need to start, we need to get ahold of, you know, insurance companies, we need to take our drug testing lists and, you know, take everybody off it, except for the two. We need to be able to give the Road Commissioners a deadline of, you know, effective this date, um, you know, we're going to swap over, so. So the policy that she proposed, effective, effective July blank, all payments for road on the work shall be contracted out by the Road Commissioners and will be paid at the approved rates by the town of Acton's annual town meeting. The exception to this would be that the hourly wage for the Road Commissioners will be paid through the payroll from the town of Acton. It is the responsibility of the Road Commissioner to collect a W-9, certificate of commercial liability insurance, and minimum of $1 million coverage, and proof of workers' compensation insurance from any company that is hired to perform the work on the town of Acton Road. The documentation shall be obtained before the work commences and shall be delivered to the treasurer of the town of Acton. Um, that's, this is the first time I've read it in its entirety. Do we put any, I'm not sure if the drug testing piece has to go in there?
The only thing that you'd want to add on this, to, to cover the town of Acton, so you got your million dollars worth of coverage, great and all that, workman's comp. Um, but one thing you, you might want to add in there that all contractors abide by all federal guidelines, dah 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 dah. Okay, so what that does, it covers so that the contractor, say, a contractor runs his truck for the town of Acton, he, by federal law, has to have his own drug testing policy. Okay, so what happens is to make sure that he's covered, he's covered himself through the federal stuff. So pretty much a broad thing to say, um, um, abides by federal guidelines. State and federal guidelines.
So any and all state and federal guidelines that pertains to?
Yes. And that really covers us on the whole, whole thing, I would think.
What do you guys think about the policy? Kim, Ed?
Yeah, I think it's, I think adding that one, adding that line in would be good. I'd say an effective date would be maybe August 1st.
Yeah, so if we can do, uh, um, if we can pick, we just want to make sure that it starts like on, how the week, work week starts, do you know what I mean?
Yep, like a Monday.
Yep. So August 3rd?
Sure.
How many, uh, typically we have our town meeting on June 16th, uh, and the second week in June, or whatever, something like that. So that gives them, what, two weeks?
Before July 1st, yeah.
That's pretty much, it's going to give them the same amount of time as they normally would have, okay, good.
Uh, Michelle had proposed, when I spoke to her about it, asked her, she had, um, she said, well, as long as, you know, this week can be paid regularly, she was fine with next week, so I think that they'll be happy, hopefully, with a couple of weeks.
Yeah, I mean, August 1st is a Saturday, and, you know, the 3rd is a Monday. I think just for simplif, simplification, the 1st would work.
Yep, me too.
August 3rd, so I'll, um-
Does this need to be looked over by a lawyer or anything, do you think, or?
No, I personally don't think so. I mean, it's just a decision on the board, yep.
Right, I just, either one of you, or do you think it looks okay?
I think it's fine. A lot of our policies, we don't put too many.
So make that change, and I'll put it on the agenda next week for you to review again.
Sounds good.
All right, I keep putting my note list on the bottom. What happens when you're not at your desk? All right. Okay, so, um, we've gotten behind, the election behind us. What are we feeling about August meetings in the town hall?
I like it.
What?
I like it. I like that.
Yeah.
I thought you said I don't like it.
I know my chair is pretty comfortable, but I think it's-
All I heard was like a growl. I couldn't tell what he was saying.
What's the, uh, what's the state say right now? We still at 50?
Still at 50, um, still at 50.
A little less than that in the town hall because of the social distancing.
Right.
Yeah, we, I mean, the, the six feet apart, I mean, you know, and, and the more you read it, I mean, the six feet apart is, if you don't have a lot of PPE on you, we can certainly put the chairs apart. We're, we figure we're, we're at about 30 with the election. Um, but, you know, you were, you can, depending on what you decide, you can require masks, you know, to be worn during your meeting, um, you know, for the staff, for the residents, I mean, you know, that's, that's your call, but we'll have to separate it out and kind of play with cameras, play with the camera some and figure out how far we can get us apart. The other idea that I had, um, was maybe setting it up a particular way so that I can put those partitions that I use on voting day between you guys, so maybe you're closer together, but I have the partitions.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because I don't know how wide the screen can get. But I'll work that out.
And we have the microphones, we have the microphones, too, so that means we don't necessarily, we could have a partition in front of us as well. You know, depending on how the camera shoots through it. Uh, my other thought is if we're opening it up for us to hold meetings, that's going to open it up for everyone else to hold meetings.
I would think so.
So how is that going to work with, say, planning board when they have large gathering?
Well, so they're, I mean, they're large, they're large public hearing that they have coming up on the subdivision that's, um, being discussed is being held on the 23rd, and that's being held via Zoom. So, we're just going to have to deal with it as it comes, um, you know, I'm not sure if they're going to have one public hearing, two, I know there's been a lot of activity. You know, if, if they truly feel that it's going to be more than X amount of people, you know.
Could they stay with doing the Zoom?
Well, they can stay with, maybe that public hearing, yeah.
Yes, that's what I was saying with, you know.
Yeah, but there's a big problem with that.
They should be encouraged, sorry, David, real quick. They should be encouraged to have these meetings upstairs as well, because there's a lot more space in one less large area. We have to clean, take partitions down. So, but that's, that's direction that comes from the Board of Selectmen.
I was going to say, I would think we should have them all upstairs for now, because they do have to be set up a certain way. I don't know how either of you think, but, go ahead, David.
Um, I, I just, uh, kind of conflicted, because, I mean, I don't want to open up town hall. I'm, I'm tired of this stuff. Well, I mean, I don't mind the Zoom meetings, but what I'm saying is, we got to start interacting with the public a little bit here. Um, but the problem we have, I think we'll be all set on our side of it. Uh, I'm not a big fan of the mask. I, I wear one, I just, I, uh, but, um, but we're going to obviously have to make everybody wear a mask. I mean, you can't go to a restaurant without wearing a mask, just get you a seat. So, and most supermarkets now, and everything, they're making you do it. So, I mean, obviously, you know, we're going to have to do the same thing, but the problem we have is, if we open this up to open these meetings up like we're, like we're going back to business, um, and then we have a planning board meeting where you know as well as I do, that place is going to be packed. They're going to be in there like Sardines. We're going to have an issue, because at that point, we'll have to shut the meeting down.
Well, if it's something like that, could they do it with the Zoom? If they know that it's something that's going to bring a large crowd, that we're going to have to do this through Zoom.
But we're, we're assuming, though, that's the problem. We're assuming, though, and then if you only get 10 people in a thing, it just doesn't look right. I think the problem we're having is-
You're picking and choosing.
Yeah, you're picking and choosing. You don't want to have, okay, this committee can do regular meetings like the Finance Committee or whoever, but the planning board can't, and, 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 you know, we know this is a very contentious issue right now, and I guess, I, I don't know a real good solution. I mean, other than doing what we're doing, which I'm not a big fan of doing either, but.
Well, but after, and it's up to the board if you want me to let the, the chair of the planning board in, but, you know, we can table this and talk to Ken next week. We've got a couple of weeks. Um, but after this public hearing on the 23rd, I mean, I've, I've watched some of their Zoom meetings, and I know that the chair is very clear that nobody speaks. If it's not a public hearing, she doesn't allow any other participants. So, if there's not a public hearing, I mean, there's not a whole lot of reason for a lot of people to be there, because she's not going to let them speak, so.
When is, when is the public hearing?
23rd.
23rd, okay. So we, that, that's the one we really have to worry about.
As far as I know. So why don't we, why don't we touch, I'll touch base with Ken, um, and, um, just kind of get some feelers out there, see what the next, I know that they're going back to biweekly as well, so. Let me put some feelers out there and see what's going on, and get his opinion, and I'll bring it back before you next week.
Sounds good.
I would think as far as like the planning board, where they do have, you know, some, some things coming up that maybe, you know, they may have more people show up for. We could require that to be Zoom, based solely on that and the safety of the meeting. Um, where, you know, our meeting, we know we're going to have four of us up front. There's going to be, you know, maybe six people in the audience, maybe eight people in the audience, so, plus the camera person. Uh, you know, just based on what we can fit in the town hall safely under the guidelines.
Which is about 30, yeah.
Yeah, I think is, you know, we can, we can require them to do them via Zoom, based on that. You know, that, or we change their meetings to the, to the school gymnasium, which-
Oh, that's a bad idea.
I mean, you could do it that way, so.
That's true.
Yeah, because there you could fit-
That's something to talk to them about, yeah.
Yeah, there you could fit as many people as you need.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, they'd have to plan them around-
Same thing, yeah.
Around school events come, you know, come September, but, you know.
Maybe.
Yeah, yeah, but there's, you know, that's the only other, that's the only other thing.
Is that something I should know?
Choosing, I'm not concerned with the picking and choosing side of it, because we're doing it for safety.
Right.
Yeah, we're not picking and choosing. We're just saying, here's the amount of people you can fit in the room. Here's how you're going to have to do it if you get more than that.
Right. So give them some choices.
Let me see what he thinks and what their agendas look like after going through this, and, and I'll bring it back.
So we still thinking about opening up town hall when?
That would make our first meeting back in the office on Wednesday, August 5th.
That'd be nice. What do you guys think?
I'm fine.
August 5th?
Yep.
6 o'clock?
Yep.
And we're going to, what are we going to do? We're going to, uh, require, um-
Masks.
Masks, and-
If we, do we have to wear masks behind, would we have to wear masks behind the Plexiglas, ourselves?
I mean, that's, that's kind of, you know, that's kind of your choice. I mean, I guess, looking at it from the other end and hearing what I hear from people that come in, I mean, they don't understand why they have to wear one if you don't. So that's usually the first response, um.
Do you have extra shields, though?
I was going to say, I have full shield that you guys can wear, because it's difficult to hear with a mask over them. So if you use one of the shields, then you could, you know, I'd be able to, be able to see your face and, you know.
Yep.
Maybe we could try that, see how that works the first meeting. If it doesn't, we can regroup. I don't know what you guys think, but.
Sounds good to me.
David?
Yeah, yeah, like I said, I just, I have a hard time with a mask with a beard and all that, and it's all-
I'm going to give you a shield that's going to go over your forehead, so it's not going to go on your face.
Yeah, I'll try it out.
Yeah, I, I have a hard time breathing, too, so.
All right, next item that I have, oop, sorry.
Go ahead.
Our next item that I have is the, um, we discussed the liquor license hearing. Um, I had not released it to the liquor license, um, applicant yet. He did call me today, and with your permission, I'd like to make it the 29th of July. 29th, so it'll still be via Zoom. It'll be at 6 o'clock. Ran into a little trouble with the newspaper, uh, so I'm going to push it back a week, just to make sure that we have met all of our requirements as we do so with all of them, if we're treating them all the same.
Is it 29th on a Wednesday?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right.
You guys are good with that?
How about Ed?
Yep.
David?
Yep.
Next in your packet, oop.
Go ahead.
Sorry, Ken, I'm sorry. I'm going to get used to you, I promise. I, I usually, I keep looking at Ed, and that's just my fault, and when he goes quiet, I know I need to go on to the next thing, so I, I promise you.
I'm listening to him, too, it's okay.
I'll get used to it, and I'll, I'll stop interrupting you within a couple of weeks.
Don't worry about it.
All right, plus there's a delay. All right, so the next item in your pocket, um, this came out of an absentee ballot. Um, now, I have no idea who sent it, and that's okay. Um, because if you watch, if you watch the absentee ballot process, uh, you know that we check in, every hour on the hour, we go over and re-read off Kim Stacy, Ed Walsh, Stacey Winchell. We read off 20 or 30 names. We open them all with a letter, a letter opener. We don't take the ballots out. We then move to station number three. They're all taken out and just piled up. The envelopes move on, and then we start opening ballots and flattening them out. So by the time we get to station number four or five, there's just no way that you're ever going to know who came out of what envelope. So this note was in there, so I thought I would share it with you. Uh, here's an idea. You want people to vote, why don't you put things in English? Who can be expected to understand and vote for any of this? It is just not comprehensive. Jesus. So, uh, the-
I don't see how, how it's going to be any clearer with everything.
My job is to pass it on to you, so here's the handwritten letter.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I mean, I thought you did a pretty good job, but.
And once again, I've, I've said for how many weeks if you have questions asked?
Yep.
So, that's not the time to be asking.
Yeah, getting it ahead was really good.
I remember a voicemail that came through the town hall.
It may be connected.
What's that?
It may be connected.
And, um, I don't know, after listening to that, I was, wow. So I, I did it out-
I still have nightmares about some of those voicemails.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, anyways, so, that's that. Um, I just wanted to let you know that I'm going to be putting Michelle on the agenda for next week, uh, now that the budget's come and gone. She has also gotten the dreaded health insurance numbers. Um, and it does look like we are going to be making, uh, we're going to need to make a change to the health insurance in order to, um, cover what the, you know, what was delegated, what was allocated in that account. Um, we did talk to, to staff, or at least department heads, let me rephrase that, in regards to, you know, what they, you know, if the town had to take something away, would you rather see them contribute less to your HSA? Would you rather see them, you know, increase the deductible, which already is at $5,000? Would you rather see the amount that the town contributes each week towards the premium change? Got a little bit of feelers from some of the department heads. She's going to make some recommendations to you next week. Um, but the benefits have to change based on the renewal numbers. So with coming to health insurance, um, attached to that is going to be the personnel policy, which is the next item in your packet. Um, you have this for two reasons. Uh, number one, um, because we're going to be making a change to the health insurance, the personnel policy has to be changed, because it'll no longer say that we're paying 100% or, or whatever the recommendation in the board decide is. So I'm giving this personnel policy, because it is the, you know, policy of contention each year. Um, it is extensive and it is long, but I am pleading with you to go through it line by line, and, um, let me know if there's any- and, um, let me know if there's any changes that you wanna make. Um, you know, I know, and I, and, and I have this conversation with, with Bob, um, you know, these holidays and stuff, I mean, you've gotta be clear in there that the Board of Selectmen have the, you know, have the right, or, you know, reserve the right to do this or that. I mean, I, I am sorry how busy the transfer station was the day after, but they're also entitled to have Fourth of July off, and that's listed as a holiday, so... Sick time, I mean, just everything that's in here, um, see if, you know, based on what you've heard in the past, um, anything that you wanna change, I'm gonna put that on the agenda for next week. So, happy reading.
What was the percentage the health insurance went up, you know?
I don't.
Okay.
She just told me that we, we couldn't, uh, we couldn't swing it.
Okay.
Wouldn't it nice to know those numbers before we did our budget?
It's just like the county tax, we just never do, they never get back to her. Um, and it's unfortunate, because, I mean, I certainly, as an employee of the Town of Acton, appreciate the health insurance coverage. Um, it's just, looking at the numbers, and, and the coverage, and the insurance, the deductibles, I mean, it's, it's so expensive, and they offer so little for that amount. I mean, a five thousand dollar deductible, and I, you know, and I know we have a conversation every year, can we get in on the school, but for whatever reason, we can't, but it's just not very good coverage, you know what I mean, but it's, it's just so expensive. All right. Hmm, all right, so the next two items, um, we'll go back to the, and, and I'm not sure that we really need to go too back, too far back into this, and with your permission, Madam Chair, um, I would like to, um, let Mr. Crespe, um, in on the conversation that we're gonna have with the full board, based on our conversation today, that we can all have the conversation at once, is that okay?
That's fine. Yes.
All right, Mr. Crespe, turn your video on, and cut your camera, uh, there he is. We'll unmute you, as long as you don't get ruly. I'm sorry, what was that?
He's not unmuted.
You're not unmuted, so, okay, now try.
I said you can count on me for that.
Okay. I, I was teasing, you know that.
Uh, so was I.
Okay, oh, great. All right, so, um, we know that at last week's meeting, or two meetings ago, um, the Board of Selectmen reviewed some concerns that Mr. Crespe had in regards to freedom of information, and the turnaround time. Um, it's his, his point of order that, you know, he's trying to follow along with the planning board meetings, and the, um, Martel project, and that he needs the information quicker. He had sent the email to you guys, saying that it, it wasn't helpful to have it, you know, moments before a meeting. So, you guys had this discussion two weeks ago, and, uh, you made the decision that, um, any, any freedom of information, we wanna make, makes it clear, this is not about Mr. Crespe, he happens to be the individual at this time, but a freedom of information that comes, comes forth pertaining to something that's on that agenda, that the department had, whether it's my department, Land Use Department, is to get it to the town administrator by Wednesday at five o'clock, so that the individual, Mr. Crespe or somebody else, has time to review before the meeting, is that correct?
Uh-uh.
That, right, that's what we decided, what you decided?
Yes.
Okay.
Last week, yeah.
I was, I was waiting for the chair to say yes.
I'm having a hard time hearing you, Jen.
Ooh. Can you hear me, Ed?
Yes, loud and clear.
I'm having a hard time hearing Jennifer, she's all, all, she's crackling up, and she's frozen on my screen.
Yeah, you keep, you keep freezing up, Kim.
You're freezing up, Kimberly.
Yep.
Does it me, or is it Jennifer's frozen on my screen?
No, it's you. You, you keep, your video keeps freezing.
Uh, let's see here.
It's gotta be her, right?
Try this again.
All right, wanna keep going, Jennifer?
Yeah, I can hear you perfect now.
Okay.
Okay, go.
Um, so anyways, so, um, I sent the email that the Board of Selectmen saw, um, you know, indicating to the, the department, this particular department, indicating that, um, you know, what your instruction was, um, and we have gotten caught up with all but one freedom of information request, um, and this is just where, so, Kim and I met with, with the department, um, this afternoon, and we were scheduled to have a conference call with Mr. Crespe, but he was, um, he was tied up with something else. We just wanna see if the full Board of Selectmen are kind of on the same page with this, so... Anything, so anything that goes to the planning board, in the planning board packet, um, regarding a particular project that, that Mr. Crespe has interest in, originally, he had kinda worded it, that can I just keep an open freedom of information? So, every week when you do your packets for the planning board, can you just make me a set for, for me? I mean, if you're making them anyways, for nine planning board members, can you make them for him? Um, so that was what we went into the meeting to discuss, right, Kim?
Right.
It was brought to our attention that, uh, that they don't always make paper copies of everything for every member. That the, um, you know, at the chair's discretion, um, they're not always copied and sent out. There's sometimes things are placed in a file, and the planning board members could go in there and look for them. Um, and as I understand it, she mentions that at meetings, but, you know, like, like, for example, the letters of concern that came in from Woodsum, Drummond and Woodsum, and, um, water, the watershed place. You know, I, I kinda use that as an example, I said, so when you, you know, when you copied those for all planning board members, can you just make him a copy of them? Um, and that's where we kinda got on the conversation, that they do things a little differently, um, and, you know, the chair may or may not send that information to them. So, what I'm getting to, at the end of this, what it boils down to is, that open request then is not gonna work, because Mr. Crespe is looking for everything that comes through there. So, now we're back to, does he, you know, does the department have enough time to get these requests? Um, he had, they have one that they're working on, and, and as I understood it, Ken, it was supposed to be, it was, they were just finishing it up today when we were leaving?
She's froze again. I guess if I could interject, um, if she's not making copies for all the planning board members of everything that comes in, and everything that's pertinent to what they're discussing, how can they all make, how can they make an informed decision?
That's right. That's a very good observation, Ed.
Welcome back, Kim.
It doesn't make sense to me.
And I, and I don't wanna answer that, I mean, Kim, but is that what I heard? Is that what we heard, Kim, just to make sure I'm not wording it wrong?
Yes, no, no, that, you know, not everything, you know, gets handed out. It's just what, I guess, the person...
Because maybe it's in a file, or maybe it's online, I don't know, and you, and we can certainly reach out...
Doesn't make sense. Everything that comes in, everything that that board needs to make a decision on, needs to be in their hands.
Everybody's gotta, they'll have the same information, so they can make the same decisions everybody else. If anything else is put aside, put in a file somewhere, it, to me, doesn't sound like everybody's getting a fair chance to get informed like they should be. Um, I think, I, I can't see why we can't ask them to make sure that, I mean, I would think, we're overlooking that committee, correct? That's our job, to make sure that committee is doing their job, right?
Well, you appoint them, yeah.
We appoint them, and I don't think it would be out of our, our realm of, you know, hey, everybody gets the same packet, now, I do understand, you know, everybody gets all the information. Everybody on that board should get all the same information, or be well-known of it. And, uh, but the, um, but Mr. Crespe, Charles, you, you would like of the information that the planning board gets?
The same packet, yeah.
What is that before, is that, is that what I'm, I'm understanding?
That, that, that's it. If the planning board gets the information regarding the Martel project, I'd like to have a copy too, so, I can distribute it with the public, and they can be informed for what the planning board's talking about.
I would, there's no reason why we, I mean, we've done it the last week or so, so we should be able to continue until they get back to their, you know, every two weeks. Um, do either one of you have a problem with that? And then, I mean, we need to talk to, you know, the, the, um, planning board about this other issue, I would say.
And it may have been, I mean, I know he mentioned, you know, copies, how many pieces of paper it was, you know, and some of the reports, and we talked about just scanning and emailing them, and, and, you know, and their depends, not all of them check their emails, um... So, and I, we're not bringing this up to, to, you know, to tell, I mean, to, I'm bringing it up, because I, I'm telling you why I can't, we can't enforce, or we can't, um, we can't meet Mr. Crespe's respons, you know, we can't leave it as just an open, give him a copy of, of whatever packet goes out, if now that we know that, you know, some correspondence may not be going to all the members.
When you do a Freedom of Information Act, you come in, you sign up, and each week that you do that, uh, is the, uh, individual charged for that?
Yes, he is. Today, he paid a hundred and twenty-some odd dollars in copies.
Okay, so, the only, the only thing that I, I would wanna make sure that that was done prior. Okay, but he wouldn't know how much to be charged, would he?
Well, no, and if I can, we do have a, we have a policy on freedom of information, um, and we, we created this policy years ago, because we had an individual that, um, would request stuff, request stuff, and then he'd never come pick it up and never pay for it. Um, previous boards, and certainly this board doesn't have to, have kinda, I mean, I'm your Freedom of Information administrator, kinda left the discretion, I mean, so far, this individual has picked up everything. I mean, I won't do a second one if he hasn't picked up and paid for the first one, I assure you.
Right.
So, you know what I mean, it's, it's a trust issue, and we're building, you know, for the most part, I mean, unless it's, you know, ridiculous and hours and weeks worth of work, you know, we haven't had any problems
Okay.
with really anybody in a long time, since the prior individual. Um, but really, so where this was going is that, so, the, Mr. Crespe wanted to come to the board and say, can I just leave an open freedom of information, so just over the next couple of weeks, can I have this? But, so when Ki, Kim and I went to speak to the department about it, that's when we kinda realized that we can't ask for your permission to do that, because it probably wouldn't, you know, it wouldn't include, sounds like, some documents. So, we just keep going the way we are, he lists out a very detailed freedom of information, if he has one, and we addressed it, I guess, as soon as we can.
When you, when you do a Freedom of Information Act, and you ask for everything to that point, so that should include the stuff stuffed in the file, correct?
Yeah, and there's not, I mean, there's no, no one's saying that it, that anything is being withheld. I mean, that's not the statement at all. There's a difference between, okay, that, you know, the chair could be making a decision that this doesn't need to go to everybody, or that she, you know, that he or she is handling certain things. I don't know how that's working, I haven't spoken to, at all. I mean, we're, Kim and I are only getting what we got from the department head.
And the problem we're gonna have is, is just getting that stuff to them before, before the meeting.
The meeting.
Yeah.
Mr. Crespe, is there anything that you wanna add, that I might have stumbled upon or missed?
No, I think that pretty much covers it. Obviously, I, I thought you were gonna kinda follow up with some of the comments about not all the planning board members getting all the information, but I guess you're just letting that...
Well, that's, I mean, so that, I mean, I, I, and, and I'm just gonna jump into Kim, I hate to do this, I mean, Mrs. Baske is here, I mean, I can, I can put her on, you know what I mean, I think it's probably only fair, since we've talked so much about it at this point.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. You there, Kim? Uh, can I have your permission to turn it on?
Uh, yeah, Dave, you okay with that?
Yeah, I, I, I think it's a good idea.
Okay.
All right, Kim, let me know when you can hear us again.
I can hear you now, everything's okay, I don't know what's going on.
So, I did, um, I added, and got Ed and David's, uh, permission, let, uh, Joyce in, it's only fair that as much of the conversation's gone on at this point, um...
Yep, that would be good.
So, Joyce, you kinda heard everything that Kim and I just kinda learned towards the very end, we met, you know, just right before closing, um, and we met in preparation of asking the board if we could do an open freedom of information, so that you see kinda where that went, so... Shed some light on this, please.
Well, uh, things come into the office, excuse me, to the Land Use Office, they don't come into me. They come in usually to Ken, it might be via Christine, the Land Use Secretary.
Yeah, let's try not to use names.
Okay, to, uh, well...
Secretary, yeah.
Okay, secretary. Um, usually, I go into the office twice a week, to see what is in file. It has been, since I've been on this board, and for many, many years, that's what we have had to do. There may be correspondence that goes to the Director of Planning, and it has been our responsibility, as it is the BOS's responsibility, to go in and sign bills, or whatever it is you have, it's our responsibility to go in and see what's in the file, and read it. It's, uh, not really, um, the responsibility, uh, of me to make copies for everybody. And, I will say, Mr. Crespe has probably been the number one person who has always observed, if he wants something to go to the board, he brings in an appropriate number of copies, so that what he brings in can go into every file.
So, like the, so the Acton-Wakefield watershed alliance, and the Drummond and Woodsum letter, that both went, they're, they're addressed Board of Selectmen slash Planning Board, Town of Acton. Do those, does every planning board member see those letters?
They do, they do, they, they got those...
They go in their packets?
They go in their packets.
Oh, so they are, so you are, so you are putting everything in their packets?
We put everything in their packets. Now, I can tell you that the, uh, AWOL letter,
Mm-hmm.
I personally know that came in last week.
Right.
It came in at five o'clock, five o'clock on Thursday.
So, I mean, I, so the best thing to do is just, it's supposed to be via email, right, just forward it to the whole board and be done with it?
No, this came, did not come in by email. This came in, however it did, and at five o'clock, everybody had picked up their packets, because it's Thursday, and they were, everybody was gone.
So, you just throw it in next week's packet?
So, it has to go in next week's packet, and so...
How much, I mean, do you have a lot of members that don't utilize email? Because what I try to do, and, you know, I mean, something like this comes in, I just scan it immediately and send it to my full board. I mean, A, I mean, God love my board, it gets it off my responsibility on the back, I'm giving it to them.
I understand exactly what you're saying.
Is there, I mean, is there any, you know, is it, would it be easier, do you think, if these things came in, to just to scan and email them? I know you have a member or two that may not have internet access, but they can go to the library.
Out of, out of seven members, I have four who don't have email access.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, would it be convenient, uh, to, just if we get something via email, to send it to them right away? I see no problem with that at all.
But it makes sense.
With the Land Use Secretary to do that. Um, I've got no problem with that at all, uh, you know...
So, as far as you know, every, every correspondent that comes in regarding a project, if it's addressed to you, the chair, or about a project, everybody is seeing it on the, on committee?
They should be going in and checking the file every week.
So, it's not in their packets?
Not all things go in the packet, not at all.
Yes, I thought, I thought everything went in the packet.
That's not what I said, David. That if we get things, and they can, yeah, but something may come into the office, attorney, that does not go into everyone's packet. It goes into the mother file, and each member is responsible to go into the Land Use Office and check the mother file, and see what is there, and read any correspondence that has come in. And as I said, it has been there, at least, I mean, well, since I've been on the board, that's the way it's always been. Now, and Mr. Crespe wants to speak.
I, I can live with just what's in the...
Kim's got a call on him, this isn't, Kim?
Oh, sorry.
Yes, that's okay, go ahead, Mr. Crespe. Can everybody hear him?
Let me say, you know, I'm happy with receiving what's in the, uh, the packets that goes out to the planning board members, and I understand that there may be some things where it's a single copy that would be in the other file, which is, of course, also available to the public to come in and view, and if I feel the need to come in, in, into the Land Use Office and view it, I can do that.
Correct, correct. You know, and, and I might say, and, and please do take this with all respect, more than likely, those are going to be letters either from Jillia, or the attorneys for Jillia. So, you would have, uh, information on those already, I believe.
Right, and I don't think the concern with the board was so much, no, it wasn't about Mr. Crespe getting them, they wanted to make sure that every planning board member was seeing every concern that came in, because then, you know, it's...
As I said.
It's trickling on upstairs, so, you know, they wanna make sure that somebody's seeing it, so...
Oh, no, I think you're absolutely correct.
So, while, are we good with Mr. Crespe, I wanted to address the planning board seat while, like, I got everybody here? Mr. Crespe, are you good?
So, repeat what we're doing, please.
Nothing has changed. You continue to turn in your freedom of information requests, as you have them, and, um, as I understand it, if it's on that week's agenda, you will have it by Wednesday at five o'clock.
Wednesday at five o'clock, based on what's on the document that I submit? Whatever specifically requested, not the entire...
Well, assuming it's, I, I mean, you know, I... Well, assuming it's, I mean, you know, assuming it's something that we can, you know, it's copies that are right there in handy. I mean, for example, the one that he's working on now, that's two weeks ago, it's every building permit for a specific map and lot. That's nothing that was pulled and out and ready and recently handed to the planning board. So that's taken some extensive time. That's why you don't have that one yet.
And, and that's, and that's why I gave extra time for doing that.
Right, and that's what I'm just saying. So the clarity, you know, as I understand it, the board is gonna allow, you know, he and I are gonna work together on this. It's different if you want a copy of the packet for, for a particular meeting that that's right there, we copy, you know, and give you. We will do our best to have it by then, but when you start asking for a list of permits or something specific that I can't get that quickly, you may not get it that Wednesday.
The only, the only thing I would like that level of service for is the materials that are in the packets that are going to the planning board's members.
And as I understand it, that was the direction of the selectmen, to do that, correct?
No, we...
So the Freedom of Information request can just say, and the packets regarding, you know, Martell Estates, uh...
Yeah, if you can just put a date on your packet request, that would, um, he indicated that would be helpful.
Okay, super, sounds great. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. All right, so the next, Joyce, if you hang out with us for a second. So the next, um, the next question that I want to talk to the board about is, we saw the email from Joyce, uh, let's say, two weeks ago, week and a half ago, in regards to, based on past practice, um, one of the planning board members, um, needed to be moved up to a regular seat because you had a resignation.
Correct.
So you didn't have a resignation technically because that planning board member was not reappointed through June 30th because she, uh, through July 30th because she didn't take her oath. So there was, she never got reappointed from July 1st to June 30th. Right? I mean, she never, she never got reappointed. She didn't get sworn in.
Well, she hasn't been in any meetings either, so...
Right, so, but all I'm saying is that when the board reappointed everybody from the planning board and the other committees that they reappointed for 30 days, you appointed two individuals from the planning board as alternates and everybody else in their regular seats. So Joyce sent the email saying that now that we have an opening, if you will, um, that the senior alternate should move up.
Correct.
Uh, you guys have not made that appointment yet. I did tell her that last week. Um, conversation I had with one of you, I haven't had time to talk to the other ones, was that they can just stay alternates till the end of the month because we're getting ready to reappoint some people anyways. Um, I, I just need you guys to discuss it and make some decisions.
Yeah, I think that would be, we only got a couple of weeks. And Joyce, when are you changing back to every other week?
Uh, hopefully, uh, August.
Okay, so right now you're doing, so you've still got another couple of weeks?
We, we have, uh, definitely this week and the 23rd. And the 23rd is our big meeting, so depending if we have to go to two days for a public hearing.
Yep.
Um, because I can't see us going beyond 11 o'clock at night.
No.
Um, you know, then if we have to do that, then we would go, we'd meet the following week just for the, to finish the public hearing, sort of what you did on the, you know, warrant thing. And, um, but come August, we're gonna go...
So you don't have a meeting scheduled for the 30th unless you need it as a continuation of the public hearing? Is that what I got?
You got it correctly, Jen.
Okay. So is the board's instruction that the, the two of them are just to remain alternates until you reappoint everybody for August, whoever you decide to reappoint? Or what do you want to do?
Reappoint them all together, um, when this runs out. The two alternates, do they, they alternate every time they go in? One does one meeting and one does the next one?
Depending on who's there, you know.
All right.
They may not...
What do you think? I mean...
I'd say just let them alternate.
Okay, uh, David?
No, no, I thought it was a good idea last week to, you know, I, um, I figure, I think it's overall better anyways to alternate. Gives a little bit of difference perspective, and it's so close to reappointment that, um, it would be kind of foolish just to do it now.
Yeah, we only have two weeks left, right?
Yeah.
Okay, right, right.
So they stay alternates as they were until you reappoint?
I got you, I got you. Uh, Jennifer, may I say one thing?
Ask Kim.
Kim, may I say one thing?
Yes, you can.
Thank you. Um, I agree 100% with David. There is no reason that we should not continue with Zoom meeting with the numbers that we have to have. Now, Jennifer, I heard your idea of, if you gotta go to the school, you go to the school. Never in 100 years thought of...
That wasn't my idea. That was Ed's.
Oh, Ed, hi, Ed.
Just in case it doesn't go over well, that was Ed's idea.
Okay. But no, David...
If you like it, Joyce, stay with me.
Okay, I got it. But I think David is right, for safety sake...
If it's working for you guys.
And it, and it's working, and it's fine. And David, you said this before, that one person at the door that you have to turn away, there goes your meeting.
Did you like the school idea or no, Joyce?
I liked the school idea very much. I like it.
We'll talk to Ken, bring it back, and we'll, um, I'll reach out to the superintendent as well, so...
Yeah, I, I think that's a terrific idea. I really do. Um, but right now, Zoom is, you know, we're, we're all starting just to know Zoom, and it's... If they broke, don't fix it. But it would be 100% easier for board members if we could be in one space, which I think you all feel the same way. Uh, you know, it's much easier on everybody.
I think they could probably do that. Seeing we're gonna be going back to the meetings anyways, you know, select board is, why we couldn't let the planning board meet in their little area, televise them, and then let the public Zoom in, would, would that be just as well off? No?
No, I don't think it works.
No, we had that conversation before when we checked with legal. So if you have a, you have a public meeting where there's a gathering, you have to let them in the building.
Anything over three, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, anything over three.
All right, that was my last item, Madam Chair.
All righty, so what's next? Warrant and bills. I know that I went ahead and...
Joyce, I'm turning your camera off.
I got you.
Oh, good. Have a good evening.
I was in, Kim, and signed tonight, so...
All right, great. How about you, Dave?
I'm going up in the morning.
All right, great. Uh, next thing, approval of the agenda. Somebody wanna...
Make a, make a motion, we approve the agenda?
I'll second that.
Okay, now, what do I say, Ed? Moved and seconded?
Yep, to approve the agenda?
To approve the agenda.
Is there any discussion?
Is there any further discussion? All right, so, Ed?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
The only thing you should do is say, I'm, I'll call the vote and, and yes.
I'm writing this all down.
It's okay.
And then the chair votes?
And then I vote and I say yes, and I say so, uh, majority votes? Yes. All right, so moved and seconded, and now let's see here, next thing, uh, how about minutes of the last meeting? I, I did do them.
You did them?
I did. You did to me earlier.
Make a motion, we approve the minutes of the last meeting?
I'll second that.
I can give you the date. It was, uh, July 8th.
July 8th, yeah.
All right, so we've approved the minutes of July 8th, all right. What's next? Six department heads, committee chair updates?
We didn't vote on it yet.
Okay, so, okay.
Move the seconded, move the seconded to approve the...
Moved and seconded to approve the agenda for July 8th.
Yeah, that would be the minutes.
That would be the minutes.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
Yeah.
Any further discussion?
Call for a vote.
Call for a vote, Ed?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
All right, nice to hear it too. Chair votes, yes.
Chair votes, yes. You'll be staying here asleep by the end of your night, at the end of the night.
All right. All right, now, now we can move on?
Yes.
Ma'am.
Okay, department heads, committee chair updates.
All right, with your permission, Madam Chair, I will turn on the, um, road committee members that I see, and Mrs. Birdland is here, start video, unmute. Um, Mrs. Hart is here. Well, there's Leslie.
I talked to Joe on, uh, this afternoon. He's not able to make it there. Feverishly working to open the new store. I think Thursday or Friday, or it might even be next Thursday or Friday, but it's right quick.
Nice.
They're gonna be tomorrow.
So he wasn't able to be here tonight.
Do we know, um, I've got Mrs. Hart on unmute, so I'm not sure if she can hear us. Do we know who iPhone is? Um, Leslie, do you know if you had somebody? Ooh, there's Cindy?
Yes.
There she is. Good job, Cindy. Do we know if...
I'm in Jay's house.
Oh, I thought the ceiling looked, the ceiling looked familiar. Um, Leslie, do you know who iPhone might be? Are you expecting any other members?
Um, I sent the email, um, to everyone except, um, Robin, and the only ones who responded was Jay and Cindy. Um, I texted Robin and he did not respond.
So we'll just, as a, as a, oh, Denny, did you get, reach Denny?
I, uh, yeah, I, I actually, I, um, texted and emailed Denny because his email address, I think, is his daughter's, so I texted him just in case, you know, in case he didn't see it, um, but I did not...
So, um, Madam Chair, I just will remind, because some of the Zoom computers, we can't tell what they're called, so someone can hit the chat button if they're road committee related, and, and I don't notice them, so we'll turn them on. But otherwise, I'd say you have...
I knew that Cindy and Jay and I were gonna be here. That was all that responded.
Perfect, so we'll just go with that?
Yeah.
All right, so I emailed, uh, your committee, Leslie, and the Board of Selectmen. Everybody should have, uh, the Article 43, um, application, another copy of it. Um, per the direction of the Board of Selectmen, I'll just go over the changes that were made, and then you guys can, uh, do with it as you will. So on the homepage, I underlined so it'd be clear, the last two sentences that were added, "All applications must be received and approved prior to any work being started. Additionally, a completed W-9 must be on file with the Treasurer's Office prior to any funds being released." On page two, it was either 5C or 4C somewhere. I removed the high, medium, low risk that you guys have talked about, and that is all I have done to said documents.
Yeah, it's all we agreed on doing.
Yes, but did we get any, um, emails in? I know Ed asked last week if, um, anybody on the road committee had any, um, thing they wanted.
No, but I then, go ahead and...
I had a conversation with Leslie last night, uh, and kind of, you know, just discussed what to try to put in, what not to put in, and really couldn't, couldn't come up with anything really good to add to it, so...
Does that verbiage sound like what you instructed?
As far as the, uh, you know, for what we added, yes. Um, I think the only place that we're still a little fuzzy on is...
Maintenance?
The, well, maintenance, not so much the maintenance, but the road grading side of it, because maintenance, grading is maintenance. Um, but if, if it's being done in conjunction to a project, the road needs to be graded, cost of, you know, to bring it back to standard. And if there was a major washout, um, you know, that is over the above, there was a pelvert that failed, that, you know, couldn't handle the water or whatever it may be, um, and grading had to be done, that would, I think that would...
So you could add grain to be applicable after, due to a repair. But the problem is, if you, if you say, you know, road grain is part of the repair, then if they grade a mile of road because they, they have, uh...
Well, can we just sort of blur it in?
What if in front of the word grading, you put like, you know, regular grading or yearly grading? If that's something they do every year for maintenance, and you don't want that to be part of it, can you add a word, you know what I mean, but you want to leave grading open to a project due to a washout? I mean, say something like, you know, "The town therefore considers routine maintenance on private road, such as, you know, yearly grading." I mean, how, I don't even know, how long do you grade, how often do you grade a road for regular maintenance?
At least once a year.
Once a year, so if we did something like that...
Usually spring and the fall.
So maybe twice a year.
So yearly or regular grading, or it must be some technical word you can throw in there.
Yearly, spring, and fall grading. Just do yearly, spring, and fall grading, sweeping, plowing, as an eligible. So that way, if there is some kind of, you know, like Ed was saying...
Now, what if, what if we did do grading like once every three years for them? As long as they maintain the road and they graded it the off two years?
That's a gray area.
Well, it's not so much gray, we can make it black and white. You know, we would grade, but we'd have to have proof that they graded it on the other two years, which is very simple to get.
Well, what you're doing is you're actually, okay, so you say, okay, we can't grade those two years, but we can grade that year, so now the maintenance part, you're still doing maintenance.
No, they have to prove that the road was graded, you know, on, uh, you know, 2020, 2021, 2022, we could, you know, they could put in for grading on that year.
Like every so many years, they could put in for grading?
You know, I mean, they're not, well, they're not gonna get any more than 3,000 bucks anyway right now.
Right. I mean, it's definitely something...
Go ahead, sorry, but that was a delay.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
I was just gonna say, I mean, that's something that definitely could be put in here. It's in black and white. It's not, we're gonna grade every year, but every so many years, if you have kept up with maintenance, then maybe that's a perk to this, or...
Exactly.
You know...
But what the problem is, is you're turning around saying, okay, it's maintenance. Then you're gonna turn around and pay for maintenance in the third year. Instead of putting down, okay, uh, grading to be approv, um, grading to be done due to a major, um, repair, okay? Then, then that would be acceptable. Because you're gonna grade because you did a repair, and now you're gonna regrade the road, then it's acceptable, but if you put down there, we're gonna grade because they did three years, two years in a row, then we're gonna kick in for the third time. Now you're saying, we're gonna take care of maintenance.
It's just that one, it's just that one item. It's just, uh, it's the perk.
I think it's fine.
Is that, I mean, is that a benefit, you're saying, Ed, that that would be a benefit to them doing it spring and fall, spring and fall for two years, and then the third year is something...
We would do it once. I'm not saying you do it spring or fall.
Just once.
In that year. They could pick spring or fall.
But that's only after showing invoices that they've done it, they've paid for for the prior two years?
If they keep up with the maintenance, if they keep up with the maintenance for two years in a row, we will grade one of the other, you know, we'll, we'll put in, if they, if it's $3,000, they can put in for the three. If it's, I don't know, what, Dave, what does grading cost for a road, for a mile? Would you spend 500? Would you spend 1,000?
Oh, easy, um, usually, um, half a mile road's about $1,500 with a load of gravel, something like that.
It's only the grader. It's not the load of gravel. It's just, it's just the equipment, just the grader. Grading, you know, grading being grading the road, not adding...
Problem is, is you, you, nothing in there says that. So what you're gonna do by doing this, you're opening up a can of worms again because you're gonna have to specify just the grader or no gravel, this or that. By all you gotta do to put in here, so we don't, because we're, the reason why we're doing this is because we have to make sure we're not doing maintenance, and we're doing this as a grant. So this is supposed to be for repairs to mitigate. So when you start turning around saying, three years, well, we'll grade your road because you're such good, you know, so good for the first two years, you have to get rid of that gray area. So if you turn around, it's, okay, we'll grade, now we're gonna, oh, now we're doing maintenance again. We want to stay away from the maintenance thing, so we make sure that we're not breaking the law, so...
But what happens to...
Yeah.
Oh, I was just gonna say, do you feel though that maybe a good incentives, a good incentive for these road committees to make sure they take care of their roads as best as they can, if they know that maybe they're going to get a grading every few years versus maybe other roads that aren't doing it and just waiting for these huge issues to come up? And then we got...
But the only thing is, if you take the, you take, the only problem is this, okay, these road associations charge their dues, they have an annual meeting, they come up with their, their maintenance plan for the year, okay? Whatever they give out of the Town of Acton for fixing major issues, okay, is money they don't have to spend out of that. They've already budgeted for that. They should be doing it anyways. It's part of the, you know, part of the, uh, road grading manual, okay? So whatever they get out of us is a grant.
May I ask a quick question, Kim?
It shouldn't be anything to do with annual maintenance.
That would kind of solve this either way. That would kind of solve this either way. Do we know, do we have a legal opinion? Are we 100% certain that we cannot pay for maintenance with this money?
I don't feel like we-
That's what, you know, that, I guess that's what needs to be answered, because if the answer is yes, then, then Ed might have a good, good point, but we can't legally do it. That's the piece that you need to agree on first, is can you legally spend on maintenance? And then the question is, does the majority of the board want to offer some sort of incentive? Do you want to leave it the way it is? But I'm not sure that question has been answered, so as much as I appreciate the back and forth, but-
Why don't we get that question answered?
I think it was the, it was, it was the board, it was us, the board, that said, we're not going to pay for maintenance. It was documentation.
And there was, and there was some documentation.
But does the law, what does the law say?
It's vague on maintenance.
You can't use, you can't use private money, you can't use town taxpayer money on private roads, right?
That's what the state says, yes.
But we've got this loophole, right? And that's how we got the Article 43.
Yes.
Okay.
And it's supposed to mitigate issues. Now, the problem we're having is, is every time we turn around, we make adjustments to this. Because, oh, well, now all of a sudden a pothole has to be graded out because that's detrimental to the lake, so now we have to grade it. So that's, what we're trying to do here is trying to get rid of the gray areas, make sure everybody's on the same playing field here, and stop these loopholes and this and that. We want to get rid of the loopholes. So by even adding in road grading onto that in three years, you've just created a loophole. And then it opens us up to the point where, okay, now we're doing maintenance again. So why weren't we doing maintenance the first two years? Because that's what you just did.
I don't see why we're putting a loophole in it, because we're also, we're also putting in there the stipulations that they have to do in order to have this done. It's not a loophole. It's, it's-
Who says, who says though, okay, they're going to come in and present to us, or the next board or whoever, and say, okay, um, we got potholes and it's washing out and it's detrimental to the lake. So, you know, we graded a couple of times the last couple of years, but, uh, we want our road graded. Then you're stuck in the same boat we're in right now. We're maintaining their road because they're not. So we, we had talked about doing this as a grant process to mitigate large issues. Grading the road is a general maintenance, it's an annual maintenance issue. And if we put in there the road to be graded after large repair, that, uh, a large repair approved by the select board, then there you get rid of that issue. Then the road can be graded. But you've got the problem is, is, like I said before, if you have a washout down the road 100 feet, a small washout, and they go in and get money to fix that washout, but they got a mile of road, we're, we're going to pay to grade the whole road?
Well, that's why we have in here that we have to look at it prior to any work being done. We see a pothole and it covers 150 feet, you know.
Grade 150 feet. But what I'm, what I'm telling you is by, by doing, to, to grade, you know, to grade the approved project, fine, but not to grade the road, okay? Um, you know, I just don't want to open this up so there's more gray area, because we keep coming into this twilight zone of, well, is it maintenance, is it not? We have dictate whether or not it's maintenance or not. If we turn around and say we want to do road grading, then now it's maintenance. And we know that's maintenance.
Well, let's make a decision here on, okay, at the beginning of it, you know, we've got the, therefore considers routine maintenance on the private road. Um, and it has the EG grading, sweeping, plowing. Um, what do we want to put in there that says, um, Ed or David, so that if and when they do need, you know, emergency or, or something taken care of, it will also include the grading of whatever that work is? How do we word that?
Why don't you just add the, the, um, the spring and fall that you talked about, you know, the yearly? This is Berlin, has her hand up. Um, if you're back to, if you're back to making sure it's not maintenance, you could just add something in clarifying the difference.
Right. That's what I would like to do. Ed, what do you think?
Yeah, I'm just reading over the, over the verbiage right now. Go to Dave if you want.
Unfortunately, we've, we've, we've been getting recommendations from the road committee that hasn't had any recommenda-, you know, any meetings to get the voice of the rest of the committee. Um, and I, that's, that's a little troublesome to me, but, um, I want to make this as black as white as possible.
Do you want to hear from them, Kim? We did invite them to this meeting.
Yeah, and I'd also like to hear from, um, I know we talked a little bit about, um, maintenance and the lawyer. Can we look at old stuff that we got, um, just-
Yeah, I mean, I, we can show you the title, the, the statute that very clearly says you can't use taxpayer money on private roads. That's clear and that's why Acton stopped doing what they did in 06.
Right.
The question is, based on this MSR statute in the 3106, is it different because of this process?
Right. And that's what I, you know, can we find that out?
I can certainly send that question if you'd like. Absolutely.
Right. And then, once we get the answer to that, maybe we can go back to what Ed brought up, but for now, let's try to get this-
I'm sure we must have had that question answered, because we wouldn't, if the question was no, it wouldn't have even gotten-
I just don't, right.
The problem is, is when, when, when you had the lawyer from, the letter from the lawyer making the recommendation of what we were supposed to do, it was supposed to be a grant process, dah 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 dah. Okay, now, um, the problem is, is who's going to find maintenance? Now, it's our job right now to define that, okay? Because we have one person, say, from the Blacks Dictionary or whatever that was last week or a couple of weeks ago, says dah 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 dah. But anybody that goes out and does road maintenance knows what maintenance is. Maintenance is changing street signs, upgrading your roads, doing your ditching, dah 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 dah. We were, we were, I was under the impression when we've been talking about this, that this was to mitigate large problems that was going to impact the lake. And, and anything, you can turn around and say, anything's a large problem if you want to. But I was under the impression that, that we made this change, we talked last week about making this change so that, um, we can, uh, get this process rolling. Now this process isn't rolling now, because one of the committee members talked to a select board member-
No. It's not right now, Dave. That's not the case. I mentioned this three weeks ago.
Not, not talking about doing any road grading in three weeks.
I did.
That's the first I heard about it.
I brought this up at least three weeks ago.
I guess I would have remembered that, because it's one thing that I've been right-
No, I know. You have a good memory, but Jay-
I have a very good memory and I can tell you right now-
Do we have, do we have some committee members that want to speak? Yes. Jennifer?
Yes, Pam?
Um, who do we have that, that want to speak?
Leslie has her hand up.
Okay, so let's hear what Leslie has to say real quick, and then we'll go on from there.
Um, I've done a lot of talking to a lot of people about this, and a while back, I spoke with both Wendy Garland and Amanda Pratt at DEP, um, regarding the controversy we've had about maintenance and repair. And under home rule, the town meeting can define, um, grading as repair, as it does, it can, it, it can, uh, you're repairing the crown of the road. Um, this, our, this money is not supposed to go for, um, Dave, you're calling it large projects. It's not supposed to be paying for anything new. Guidance that the road committee has always given the road associations is, um, for example, it will not put in a new culvert, it will repair a culvert that fails or one that needs repair. Um, so going under, and, and part of the reason that the, the question, uh, was put on the application initially was, have you applied for a 319 grant? Was to, uh, was to determine whether they've done the, the ma-, the big projects that they were supposed to do. Um, and we had also, um, when, we had talked with the select board initially with the first application, had talked about plowing not being eligible, because it wasn't, it didn't fall under that classification. Um, so I'm not quite sure that if we can't pay for new things, what you would be covering. Um, your, your new application requires prior approval. Uh, if there is a, an emergency, there's no way to get prior approval. There's no way to get DEP in, um, on a timely basis to, to fix things. So-
We did talk a bit about that last week and saying-
Right. No, but the, 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 the new app, the, the application that you're considering, uh, requires a DEP comes in, it requires prior approval.
Unless.
And-
Does that require DEP, by somebody-
We did talk about, um, David, did we talk about, um, unless it was, uh, not a state of emergency, but what did you say last week, um, uh, if a storm came and I, you know, we would not waver it, but, you know, give it top priority. How could we put something like that into here? You know?
Emergency circumstances, uh-
Mitigating.
Yeah, but you, he had, sorry, he had said that, I mean, he wanted it to be a, um, a state, I mean, who you, did you want to deem the emergency? Whether it was the board of selectmen or are we, are we letting the, you know, the state deem the emergency?
Well, I mean, a-
I think the town should.
Oh, yeah, a washout with, uh, you know, we get another situation where we get five inches of rain in two hours and it washes out one of the roads. You know, because the culvert couldn't handle it or whatever. That, you know, that's emergency. It's pretty awful.
By state law, we're allowed to fix it anyways. Okay, so the culvert washes out, by state law, we can roll in anyways without even dealing with Article 43. We're turning this into something that's not. Now, I did not say that this had to be for new stuff.
Would you rather though, would you rather them come to us and use this money? If there's an issue than us going out and taking care of something as a town and using-
I think it'd be more beneficial for us to just go fix it. You know, I was not saying-
I don't know what I'm asking.
I think it would be beneficial to the Article 43 that if you have a major washout, say, um, what room, I don't know, he was, I'll use Lakeside, okay? Say Lakeside. What, the, the culvert disappears, okay, and we go in and we get the road passable, we stabilize it, but we're not redoing the road, we're just getting it so traffic in and out, okay? That's, that's a circumstance, okay? That's a major fail.
You're getting it so emergency vehicles can get-
All right, now, have we, when's the last time we did something like that on a private road? Or have they done it themselves?
The private roads usually do it themselves. I mean, back in the day when we had, uh, Mother's Day, the Mother's Day event, Patriot's Day, Patriot's Day and 13th Street washed out, okay? Um, the town, they called the town, the town didn't go down because obviously it had other issues. And, um, I took care of it then. Um, but it does, it does state in law that we have to build and make it so five trucks can get out and emergency vehicles. That, and that, that problem is, that keeps getting miscreed because, well, that now we have to take care of the road because of that. But I, the, the state says that we, the town has the authority to go in to make sure the town folk can get in and out in an emergency.
So should that blurb be put in here? Should that blurb be put in here so that they know that, so they don't need to ask for funds in an emergency? They know that they can call the town and we're going to send our guys there to fix it. Is this what we're saying?
The selectmen would have to make that decision, you know, on the spot. That's something there, that would be an emergency decision that we would have to make. And, um, and, and, and there's no issue with that. So what we've done is we've turned this into another situation. We said, oh, wow, okay, road's going to wash out, we can't get any money. Um, the town could come in and take care of it anyways. Let's get back to the basics here of what this is for. This is a grant, we want, we're setting this up as a grant process for, yeah, okay, if you have plugged up culverts and this and that because of a storm, whatever. But that's why DP's going to come in and say this, DP or your county or AWOL or any, uh, soil consultant, uh, environmental consultant or whatever, like we put in here, they'll come in, yep, dah 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 dah. But we turn it into something different. And I think we're veering off from where we need to be here. If we're worried about the road grading, we're looking at it too hard. Road grading, obviously would, the road would have to be regraded after a project is done. We all know that.
Right. Why can't we just put that in here? Why can't we just put, that way it's in, it's done, uh, you know? Keep, keep the fact that we're not going to do ma-, maintaining spring and fall, but if there is, you know, um, repairs being done and involves grading, we pay for that. It will come out of it.
That's exactly it, yes.
What do you think, Ed, on that?
Basically already in there, because it does state that we're not paying for road grading as maintenance.
Right. But we will pay for grading for repairs?
It's not of a, yeah, it's not of a repair, so.
It's, it's all there anyways. It's all there.
It is. So I-
We're making something out of nothing here. Um, we're, we're picking straws here, and it's all here, I guess if you want to get technical, but maybe we've got a-
You know? You know, like black and white, like you said, you know, uh, so there is no questions.
We, we brought over this, uh, how many weeks we pulled a little this, we changed stuff, we keep making it right, and then we come up with another idea, and all we're doing is making it more difficult. And right now, it's pretty plain and simple. We're not paying for roof, maintenance, grading, maintenance. Obviously, everybody knows, if somebody goes in and changes on a culvert, they got to regrade that section of road. That's just a part of the project, and when they come to us with that proposal, obviously that will be in there, okay? But it also, if it says, okay, I'm going to go up to Edison Cove Road, I'm going to replace the culvert at the swamp, I'm going to mi-, upgrade a mile of road, I'm going to deny that. Because I only want the-
We're not fixing it. Right. You only want the path that's been fixed.
So that's why I make this difficult.
So the document we have now, we believe will work, okay? We know we may have to adjust it later, but what we have now, it, you know-
Could at least get us moving.
Should work. So I'm going to make a motion right now that we approve this document as we have it right this second. So we can move forward, we can get some people in, we can start trying to make this thing work and see where we go.
All right. So we're going to make a motion to make a vote?
I'll second that.
I mean, we don't have a date on this document, but I guess we just date it as the document that we've been given, you know, what's today's date, the 15th, you know, July 15th.
15th.
So.
So June 15th.
Why?
Frankly, I'm tired of talking about it. I want to see if it works. So.
Yeah, it would be nice to get it out there and, you know, we can always, we can review it.
Yep.
I think, but when we get-
They'll bring it back to us.
We get this rolling, I think the process, after it's figured out, will go smoothly. We'll start seeing some money getting to the private roads where it belongs. And, uh, let's, you know, I think we've, we've done, I think we've done well to get to this point to make it so it's black and white.
I want to, next week, um, can we take care of the ones that came in before this? Because those need to be taken care of. Those should be the first things we're doing once this goes out.
Well, they've been sent back.
I know. Well, I'm asking if they will send them to us and, you know, you know, the ones that got returned. I mean, we, we're not going by this form, we're going by the previous one, and I would think that they should be first.
You wanted, as I understood it, you wanted to go by this form with the exception that the work being, had to be done in, in advance?
Right.
Okay, right.
It doesn't, right. We're not going to hold it to them, you know, because they already did the work.
Right.
We got two roads, correct?
I pulled the file. I, I pulled the file.
We want to just make sure that the ones that get denied don't reapply.
I, I honestly believe the only one we denied was, um, 13th Street.
No, we denied-
It went out, Wilkins.
Bolt's Lake, Bolt's Lake.
Is that Wilkins?
No, Wilkins got approved.
Oh, that was Mr. Bama. Right, right, right.
He came in and gave another one when it was down. We, we, uh, we did not approve Bolt's Lake because they did not have a lake survey, and that's the road committee.
Well, yeah, uh, Leslie, what was it? What road was that? That was, um, Cindy, do you remember? Was it Mr. Gregory that was on behalf of that one?
Yes, it was.
What road was that, Leslie?
It was, um, Bolt's, um, or The Ridge.
Oh, the, oh, The Ridge, that's what it was. Okay. So I'm sending, so I'm going to reach out to these three individu-, these three road associations and basically ask them to fill out the new application, let them know they can disregard the statement on there about the work happened to be done uh, prior to, and ask them to, to resubmit their application so that, and then I'm going to send it to the full board and the road committee to start reviewing.
Yep. And they should be the first three that we see.
What fiscal year is that going to go under? Is it going to go under the last years?
No, it can't.
Has to go into this year.
Has to go into this year.
2020.
The year we give them the money, right?
Yep.
Yeah. The other year's closed out.
It all rolls over anyways. It's all the same account that money will, you know, rolls over.
They, they could affect, um, uh, a, a new application for this year. That's why I'm asking.
Well, yes and no, because there's nothing in this, this application, nor has this board made a policy that says they can't apply more than once at this point. So let's, let's deal with that when it comes to the board.
Right.
Well, $3,000 for, is it per year?
It's, yeah, it's per fiscal year.
Yeah, but I'm not sure that this is, did this board make that agreement as well? For fiscal year, $3,000?
That was the, the policy that was in place.
Yeah, it was a standing agreement.
It was a standing agreement, right, and I believe that was with, with Ms. Miller. So, I mean, that's up to you guys to discuss. You want to think about that for next week, at least get these three applications out and then decide if there's something.
We can also make an exception, we, I would think we could make an exception for those two roads there that we sent back because of what happened. And, I mean, honestly.
Family ones.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, and, and we can also look at the, the numbers too, you know? We, we don't have a whole lot of people applying, our roads applying for this. And, you know, the dollar amounts, you know, could be adjusted. I have no, no issues with that, as long as it's going to a good cause.
We just got one little thing we have to do before we go any further.
What's that?
We need to vote on this.
Yes, we do, all right, so.
So there's a motion on the floor to.
Make, accept it, right?
Yep, as of the July 15th draft.
Okay, July 15th draft, so Ed, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
David?
Yes.
I'm going to vote yes.
I will reach out to the committees tomorrow and I will tell, not, not committees, you know what I mean? And I do have, I'm going to say at least two roads that have recently asked me for the application, wanting to know where it stands because they're ready to move forward. So I'll put it on the website, try to put a little blurb on the internet and cable and say that the new applications are ready and get them online.
Okay.
And Leslie, once you have those applications, as soon as I get them in, I'll send them to you guys as a whole.
Okay.
Call a meeting so your committee can review it, make a recommendation.
All right, thank you, and then, now that I know that we can start meeting in, in public as of August, I'm going to schedule a meeting.
Yeah, and Kim, you want me to send an email to all of the committees? I mean, you've got some of the little, you know, four constabantes.
I think so, yeah, the follow ones, yeah, yeah, I think so.
They may be interested in this meeting. Hopefully Cheryl wrote that down, wink, wink, I can't see her. Thank God for Cheryl.
All right, moving on to old business? Do we have any old business?
No.
No? All right, new business, A, York County Assessor's Notice.
York County Assessor's Notice, so in your packet you have an assessor's return. This is for the Board of Selectmen, this is for the county tax, the amount of $327,134.77. It's an interesting conversation that the treasurer and I had because, you know, we know that the board needs to sign this. And I said, well, what if they don't? He said, well, I have to, I have to pay it anyways. I said, you know, ma'am, like, then what is the purpose? And she said, it's more in receipt of acknowledgement that it came. So unfortunately, there's not a whole lot of wiggle room, or, and I'm going to rephrase that, there's no wiggle room. This is from the York County Commissioners, sort of reaching out to yours, looking for a motion to have you guys sign this packet so we can move it forward with payment.
All right, so we have to make a motion?
I was just looking, oh, county tax.
County tax, assessors.
So we figured, we budgeted what? Yeah, 327,135? 327,134, look at that, okay. Just making sure we budgeted enough for it.
Well, we, we had to find it, but we did luckily.
Yeah, yeah, we got it by pennies.
Do you remember what it was last year?
I, yeah, I just had it.
Lower.
Is it on here?
117, something like that.
It was lower.
It was, it was.
County tax goes a little higher.
It seems to keep going up every year.
309,239.
But if people don't go to the York County meetings or speak to their commissioners.
They just keep, now, does this need to be read out? Do I need to read this?
No, you can just accept a motion to sign it in the amount of blah, 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 and it'll be in your to sign folder.
All right.
I make a motion, we sign the, uh, sign the county tax assessment.
327,134.77. I'll second that.
What do I have to say, Ed?
Okay, moved and seconded.
All right, so it's moved and seconded.
Yep.
Yep.
To sign the county tax.
Out to sign or accept.
Any further discussion?
Any further discussion? Ed?
We're, we're 23 cents under what we budgeted.
Well, there.
Michelle, I tell you, she does a great job.
She's good.
Or she's a good guesser, one or the other. Yeah, no, she does a great job.
All right, so.
I don't have any votes, yeah, call for a vote.
David, call for a vote?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
When the chair votes yes. There you go, you did it.
All righty.
That's the way of saying it, moving along.
Moving along, I know.
I was just saying what her next words would be, that's all.
I appreciate it because, you know, I'm not used to this job. All right, how about?
Oh yeah, you've only been in it for an hour and a half.
We're not done yet, no.
Doing good.
B, Drummond and Woodson Acton Wakefield letters.
So these are just informational for the board because they came directly, directed to the Board of Selectmen, so I wanted to make sure that all three of you saw them. Uh, the first one is a letter from, I think there's actually two Drummond and Woodson letters, one from Acton Wakefield Watershed Alliance, both with concerns regarding the Martell property. Two things that I just want to point out from my stance, I did, I did send two emails today. The first one just asked the individual sending the letter to clarify my title. She had me listed as an Acton Land Use Administrator, so I wanted to clarify that I did not work for the land use so that she didn't, you know, send me documents that I, I don't need if they don't pertain to the Board of Selectmen. After conversation and a further review of said letter, it is troublesome to, for me, to read the, uh, second brand new paragraph on page two. Perhaps the most affluent example of the board's unfair treatment of Julia is in the proceedings that occurred partway through the July 2nd meeting when both this attorney for Julia and the developer's attorney raised their hands on the Zoom platform to be recognized. Almost immediately, the town meeting administrator cut off my video feed while allowing the other video feeds of the developers to remain active. Like I said, I didn't read the email originally because I skimmed it, but I do want.
This is on page two?
That was on page two. The second paragraph down.
Okay.
The next planning board meeting held in July. Is that the one you're talking about?
Uh, this is a Drummond and Woodson letter.
Yep.
It's, yeah, at the next planning board meeting, yeah, so the next, next paragraph down, David, perhaps.
Okay, most flagrant, yep.
So anyways, and I don't have it in front of me, but I sent a very clear email to everyone, including the Board of Selectmen, indicating that that was certainly not the case. Reiterating that I don't work with the land use. If her camera went off, it was either something on her end or something that inadvertently happened. I reminded the individual that she has private messaged me in the past about concerns of wanting to speak and certainly if her video went off for some reason, she should have reached out to me and I would have dressed it on the spot. In no way did I, nor anybody asked me or tell me to turn her video off, so. That was a fluke, I did clarify in an email that you'll see, see, see. The rest of the document is just for you to read and be aware of.
Okay. Is that all we have for that?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, well, then we could move on to the Horn Pond sign request?
So I got a letter from Robin Kettner, I might be butchering that, I'm sorry. Says, I'm the president of the Horn Pond Association and was wondering.
Can anybody hear Jen?
No, she's frozen.
Which document?
Do one of us want to read it?
Hey, show me on the picture which, which one it looks like there, I got somebody.
Can you see this?
Oh, okay, I got somebody here, I got them all over the place.
I can read it, it says, hi Jennifer, I'm the president of the Horn Pond Association, was wondering how I can go about getting a sign for the Causeway and New Bridge Road on Horn Pond about littering. There's always trash left behind by folks who park and swim and fish, and I thought a sign would be a great idea. If you have any thoughts, I would appreciate it, thanks, Robin, so. Is that something we'd have one of the road commissioners look into or get a sign for that?
Normally, when you do those signs, you know, a lot of the towns, if you drive around, they'll have no littering, you know, a fine or something like that.
All right.
I don't think we can do a fine unless we pass a policy to do that. So I don't think.
And we might already have.
I don't believe so, I know we had to make a policy of a parking ban, you know, no, no was signed, so. But I mean, could look into it, but it probably wouldn't hurt.
I thought we.
Maybe can at least get a sign up saying no littering for now.
They should leave in the trash, yeah.
I thought we had done something like that down there, we did have some signs down there on, on.
Is this, this might be down by, this isn't down at the boat ramp though. This is probably, I don't know if you know where on Pat Stephen says.
Okay.
Yeah, kind of across there, I think is where, is that where you think it is?
Canal Road.
Oh, okay.
I don't know, I would think we could put a sign up when we.
Sign for the Causeway and New Bridge.
We want to.
Oh, we could, we could put a sign up if we want. It's just, you know, if you want to put, you know, because like I said, you know, some of the other towns, you go to like Lebon and you'll drive all the place, they'll say $500 fine or whatever. But I mean, but now we could just put some signs up, just have a road commissioner do it.
Well, we're going through all these policies, couldn't we make a policy too? I mean, we could get a sign going now, but if we wanted to make a policy.
Because it could be enforced now, before we never, we were never able to enforce it. And so we got our new, well, what it is, is we never had our own sheriff.
Right, so now you do.
That allows us now to actually apply a fine to somebody for town ordinances. So if we decided, you know, we wanted to do something like that, a lot of people, if you see a $500 fine for littering, they're less likely to.
Maybe you won't do it, right.
I think it's something I'll look into.
What do you think, Ed? Can you hear me, Ed?
Hang on, yeah, I've got Jen on the phone.
Okay.
You can't get on, I guess all our internet and whatnot's gone down, so.
I know.
Yeah.
I'm going to walk through the last couple of things, it'll be quick.
Okay, she wants to walk through the last couple of things via telephone.
Okay.
I can get her to, see if it'll come over the computer.
Okay.
Jen, we were just talking about a sign down at Horn Pond. There's no issues, we don't need an ordinance or anything to do that?
No.
Okay, yeah, we can do whatever.
Okay, that would be just a no littering sign, ask for another sign that says it has a fine on it, do we need to do something different?
So you would have, you would have to have an ordinance to enforce the littering, so I'd have to check the county ordinance. Do we have anything that allowed you to charge a littering fee?
I don't think we have an ordinance to anything about littering fee, we could, but we could put a sign up that just says no littering, can't we?
Yeah, we could try that, see how it works, if it doesn't, then we could get down, down the other route afterwards, how's that?
Yep, yep.
Okay. All right.
Yep, she'll get one ordered.
Thank you.
She wants to walk through the next couple of things here, so I'm not sure where my speaker actually is here, whether it's.
I can hear her pretty good.
Okay.
So the next item is the animal shelter agreement. Uh, this is a yearly contract that the board signs, we have reviewed it, I've got the press, there are no changes, including no monetary changes, we're paying the same amount as we were last year, which is a $1.39 per, uh, per calculation based on the, uh, the population of assets. So looking for a motion, how the board find this.
Did everyone hear that?
We need a motion on this.
I, I heard parts and pieces of it, so that's for the, uh, the shelter, animal shelter, correct?
Yes.
And the price hasn't gone up, or has it?
It's on the, almost the last page, it does tell the total price on the payments, it's $3,000.
Is the price the same?
That's not it.
Jen, is the price the same as last year?
Yes, it is identical.
Identical price as last year.
Terms and contract, nothing, no wording has changed.
Okay, no, yeah, no wording has changed or anything on the contract, so I'll make a motion that we sign the AWS Shelter Agreement contract.
I'll second that.
All right, so it has been moved and seconded to accept the Animal Welfare Society's payment schedule. Anything else, Ed?
And, but no, the next thing you say, just say, you know, is there any, any further discussion?
Any further discussions, gentlemen?
Yep.
Hearing none, I'll call for a vote.
Hearing none, I will call for a vote. Ed?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
All right, and yes for me. All right. All right, all right, so we move on to the next, what's Jennifer got for us? RSMS?
The last item, Ed, is per Kim's request to put that RSMS on there. She brought it to my attention that she wants to bring it back up now that we started a new fiscal year. It's a good time to start entering in that system.
Do you want to kind of move this to next week and talk about it?
Sure.
Any of you?
Yeah.
Is that okay?
Yep.
You know? Okay, so let's wait until next week. All right, um, public comments? Do we have any public comments?
No.
No, okay, going once, going twice, as Ed said, going three times, that's it, okay. How about announcements? We're going to have a public hearing notice for 760 Youngs Ridge Road on July 23rd. Doesn't have a time, and then KB Enterprises Willie's on 729, is that the liquor license?
Yes.
Hearing, okay.
The planning board starts at 6:30, it's on your hand now.
Yep, 6:30 on the planning board.
Okay, so 6:30 on the planning board.
Via Zoom.
Via Zoom. All right, what next? Does anybody else have anything?
I don't, you did a good job.
David?
It's not easy.
Can this be put up? Did you want this put up or read out, Jennifer? Actually, she can't see.
I think you've already, I think you've already mentioned that anyway.
Yeah, yep.
That goes around the town website, correct?
Yep.
Yep, so, perfect.
Yep.
All right, so now, do I need a motion? Somebody need to make a motion to?
I'll make a motion with you, Jen.
I'll second that.
All right, well, thank you, everybody.
Call for a vote.
All right, I need a vote. David?
Yes.